Four, three, two.
Good evening and welcome to the Penfield Town Board Work Session for February 8th. I will call this meeting to order. Will the clerk, will our clerk Sue Scheit please call the roll?
Draw.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Ockenden.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Board, you have before you the approval, the minutes of the January 25th, 2023 work session. See a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Roll, call, vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All four ayes.
Thank you. Monthly reports are coming in or come shortly, most all are in that are due. I noticed today. I think there might be one outstanding. We have guests, Ms. Ivors, do we have a guest? We have a, no guests tonight, just applicants?
No, I don't believe we have any guests. I think we have one applicant who's going to be here for an administrative conditional.
Yes, we do.
Use permit.
Thank you so much. So then we'll go right into action items. First on your business, on the business is the fee schedule updates, Ms. Ivors.
Yes, so as we indicated in past meetings, the, as we were implementing the fees and getting things uploaded, we realized that the way some of the tables were laid out could be either improved or clarified so that it makes it easier for applicants to know what fees are being charged and what's required, especially with the building, building department fees and fire marshal. Additionally, we realized that in a couple of departments, some fees that were, had been previously approved in previous years didn't get captured on the table. And then additionally, as I mentioned, PCTV does have some fees it can charge to the public at large for services rendered by PCTV, and we didn't have that captured on the table. So we felt like we wanted to have the most consolidated, like in the interest of having all the departments represented, make sure that we do that. I mean, I'm happy to go through. I did provide a updated fee schedule and you'll, we're going to sort of roll right past this. So we clarified the location of like plumbing, that plumbing fee only gets charged in new residential. It had been, we had put it in the wrong section, so we fixed that. We made some changes to clarify that there's the certificate of compliance. Before, that was sort of a footnote at the bottom, and we were just concerned people might not see it. And so this makes it easier to understand what's involved. There were also a couple of specific development types that we didn't have, or building permit types that we didn't have enumerated separately, and that was something we thought would be more straightforward for everyone who's pulling a permit to know what to be charged.
I have a question, only because we heard this in goals and priorities. So I have a question as to existing residential and other projects.
Okay.
Certificate of compliance.
Yes.
If the final inspection was completed and a certificate of compliance issued, at what point is that $50 fee collected?
The fee is actually collected at the, at the applicant, when they process an application that's charged, is charged to the project.
So towards, at the beginning?
At the beginning. So when you're making application, you're paying, they do an evaluation of the various charges that are applicable to, based on the scope of work for a project. The certificate of compliance or certificate of occupancy, the project can't be closed out until that's been issued.
Okay, so nothing is owed by the resident at the time of certificate of compliance or occupancy?
Mike, go on.
Oh, it's kind of funny.
So the application fees are paid upfront. The property won't have a certificate of compliance or certificate of occupancy issued to it unless it meets the standards that are governing that permit type. So the town staff in the building department or fire marshal's office has to determine that the state codes have been met. And if it, and it behooves an applicant to get the project finished because not having a certificate of compliance or certificate of occupancy, depending on the nature of the project, would deter somebody's, or prevent somebody from being able to sell a property?
I'm, so I'm thinking of like other projects, like let's say it's not, something smaller, like a shed.
Okay.
Right, so where, so they pay the fee.
Mm-hmm.
And then do the initial inspection.
Right.
And so we heard earlier, which I think it's, you know, we are still going to be looking into this, but only because you presented it. I'm just trying to understand the timeline. So the fees would be paid at the beginning of the project.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's standard, standard practice across.
Sure, sure. So that's, this makes sense.
Yes.
I do have some concerns about, I think, what was presented earlier. It's just not, sure, quite making sense to me.
Right, so I, I think that what we want to try to make sure people understand is what the fees are associated with work.
Yep.
In places where you don't see that $50 noted on the fee schedule, the certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance fee is sort of just built into the one, one charge.
Okay, great, thank you.
It just makes it a little bit cleaner and easier.
Yep, thank you.
Can I just ask a question, only because I just had this done? I assume that that roof, that hundred dollars, like for example, a roof?
Yep.
That's probably folded in your roof, whoever does your roof?
Oh, not necessarily. So that's always, for the folks viewing at home, very important to know that whoever your contractor is, you have to verify that they are in fact pulling a building permit on your behalf.
Okay.
And, and then it's good to know what the fee is for that, because sometimes, not all, but occasionally contractors might overestimate the amount that permitting requires. So it's something that you'd want to get in writing from a contractor. And then, because ultimately if a, if a project does not have a permit and a permit is needed, it's the property owner that's held responsible, not the contractor.
And these are all new, new, new to our fee schedule?
They've always been charged.
Right.
I think they just weren't enumerated as outward, the way this one is. And I think remembering in the past, fees were added to the department sort of by resolution. And so you'd have to look, you have to find a collection of resolutions to see what the various charges are that are available. The benefit of having now it in a table is it's in one place.
One place, thank you. It's very, very easy to, to read now.
A couple of other changes you'll see, we just clarified the Webster's, the connections for Webster Sewer, and I believe in Perrington, just to include the certificate of compliance that's also required. So we just made, made that a little bit more clear for folks. I'll share with you that we, this, I should, oh goodness, I apologize. That's a formatting issue that I will correct. This is the, the change of occupancy owner-operator. There's, we're looking at, I don't, we'll have to take a look at, this is essentially the inspection that the fire marshal's office does anyway. But we wanted to make, have it captured separately on the table of, the table so that it's clear that there's a, a process by which that change of occupancy gets navigated. The other thing you'll notice is that there's a line here, and I do apologize, I will update this fee schedule and send it to you. The, the page selection is not right on this one document. But the vacant and defaulted mortgage registry is something that we're talking about as part of the amendment to chapter 260. Chapter 260, as it currently sits, has the fees embedded in it. In talking with our town attorney, it's better to have the fees at an external table and included in the town code by reference to that table and not embedded in the, in the, in the code itself, because if the fee had a change again, it would be subject to a local law. So we're trying to straighten that out. And then we have a reinspection fee that applies after the second failure, after a second failure for construction and/or code compliance. Other change, oh, there it is. There we are. That was, I'm so sorry. Yeah, that's unfortunate. I do apologize. The fire marshal operating permits were pared down to reflect what actually the fire marshal's office does. The fee schedule before, we had some ancillary fees that other fire marshal's office charges, but in looking at ours and looking at our IPS system, decided it was better to streamline and really just have the, the table reflect the ones that we're currently using. If at such time the fire marshal's office needed to expand the fees that they charged, they would come back to this board at the end of a year and discuss that with you. The other changes that we made were the addition of, or clarification for the DPW charge, that it's not just underground utility, but it's also aerial utility. In other words, overhead wires that are in the right of way. When utility companies have to come in, they often are paying a right-of-way fee. Prior, the table didn't capture that as effectively as we thought it should. Other changes that were made, and I do apologize, I did not highlight these in yellow. The occurrence of pickup was something that had been approved in previous years through the town board. This is for animal control dog pickup, and you'll see that there's a note that it's for dog. This is for dog pickup fees are based on an individual dog's past history. So if we've got a dog that, you know, if you, a dog has to get picked up once, it's a, you know, a $30 charge. That same dog has to be picked up multiple times, the pickup charge increases with each occurrence. But it's capped after the fifth. And that is, it's, I'm trying, I, I believe that was adopted, and I could look back to, it was like 2016 or?
It's been a while.
It's been a while. It's been quite a time.
Right.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
Couple of years, two, three years.
I mean, Sue, I don't think we have too many, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do we have too many that ever go to?
Not that I know of, but there, there's a couple that have been picked up a few times. And, you know, they either run through the electric fence, or
Right.
the kids let the dog out, you know, things happen.
It's okay, okay.
So I do apologize for the formatting on the, the two additional tables. Did not change the page layout, I do apologize. But you'll see that the, the fees and the rates that for PCTV have been added as well. The, and that's really the summary of changes that were made.
Okay. We're, I mean, we're good with that?
Oh, sorry.
Oops.
I mean, I didn't mean to close that down so quickly, I apologize.
Those, that fee schedule is effective now?
Well, upon adoption, it would be, it would be made effective immediately.
So you'd want a resolution for next week?
For next week, if the, yes, if the board was inclined to move forward with these revisions, we would appreciate that greatly.
I move that we move forward with the new fee revisions.
Mm-hmm.
For 2023.
Yeah, I would second that. We've been working on this, you've been working on this for a while.
It's been a wee collective effort for a while.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Sorry, can I just ask one quick question? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at PCTV fees.
Oh, forgive me, let me get there with you.
That was the one that was cut off, kind of.
I don't, I don't know if you.
I think it's right there, yeah.
I'm just trying to get an idea in terms of use analysis, like.
In terms of how often this gets utilized, as far as a service?
Yeah, or use cases, like when, when would a, do residents frequently come in and say hello, I'd like a USB?
You know, Candace, we have, actually, we have, Mr. Renner happens to be in the audience. Dave, would you like to speak to that?
Certainly.
He's our, this is our director of PCTV, Dave Renner.
I will use the mic. Sue, your question regarding how often for media or for all of the fees?
Just, just generally, if you can speak to it.
So we average right now about 24 programs that are produced in-house for residents that are independent producers that are coming in. And then we have a duplication fee for the final product to be then duplicated and distributed.
Like independent producers of their, their own media content, or?
That is correct.
Interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Good, thanks, Dave, yeah. Move by, one second, by Bob, can we just have a, we're good with that? Go ahead with the update, okay. Roll, call, vote?
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. That will be for the next legislative meeting, Ms. Ivors.
Yes.
Thank you so much, great. Next, thank you, Dave. Next on the agenda is administrative conditional use permit to allow massage therapist office in, at 2130 Penfield Road. Carrie, I see there, the applicants are here?
Applicants are here. I'll give a brief overview, if that's okay with the board. This is a proposed 2135 mile line road in the Four Corners District where any change of use requires a new conditional use permit to be granted. In this instance, this seems like a really great candidate for administrative approval through the board at tonight's meeting, which we've done on several occasions in the recent past. There's tenant space available and the, the, of, it's an existing sort of homeopathic or holistic sort of retailer that is.
Previous.
I'm going to, I'll bring up some photos for you, that might help. This is what's there now, the Nature Path, is the space that's being taken over by our potential new business, who's going to be a licensed massage therapist. The, she's a single practitioner, will be working on clients on a one, one at a time basis. So it's not a high parking generator or parking demand use of the space. There's no significant, or I don't think any really significant change required, certainly outside. The only change that's being suggested is the Nature Path signage panel will be replaced with the, the business name that would be coming in, which is Mind Body Wellness?
Massage therapy.
Okay, excellent. I'm going off of memory, so I'm pretty proud of myself right there. The, I will share with you, this board, that this was reviewed more informally at the Historic Preservation Board to determine whether or not they would need to come in for a certificate of appropriateness. The Historic Preservation Board indicated because the change in the sign is only going to be text, it didn't need a certificate of appropriateness. And so they're, got the clear to go, if this board's okay with the use and the location, and you're inclined to grant approval for administrative approval of the conditional use, I will prep that and work with Sue Scheit to get it issued to the new business owner.
Sounds good to me, yes?
No issues here, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Can you confirm the address? Because the agenda says 2130 Penfield Road.
Oh, that would be an, I apologize.
That's okay.
That is an error, so if we could correct the, the agenda to
Okay.
do five mile.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't, no.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, so, so can we have motion?
Yeah, I would love a motion and a vote would be wonderful.
I'll make a motion that we do this approval of 2135 mile line road with administrative conditional use permit.
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll, call, vote?
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you, and that will be approved, prepared for the?
It'll be prepared and processed administratively.
Right.
And so I will be in touch once we have the documentation ready to go and the permit's ready to pick, be picked up in the clerk's office.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah.
Yes, welcome. Good luck.
Okay.
That was easy.
We, we try to keep it that way, you know?
So, thank you. Next on the agenda is 1880 Blossom Road, the Rising Storm at the Mill signage, Ms. Ivors.
Hi, so as one of the conditions of the special permit that was granted for the incoming brewery is that at the time of their application, they didn't have a signage package ready. So this board conditioned that, that approval, part of that approval would have it, them bring the sign back so you could take a look at it and make sure you're okay with it. The Historic Preservation Board has already reviewed this as an application and has indicated their approval of a certificate of appropriateness pending lighting, because that was one question that came up, and they were, they weren't clear on what was going to be used for lighting. I've since obtained information from the, and I'm just going to zoom in so you can see it. There is no internal lighting proposed for the sign. They are looking at using gooseneck lighting to light from overhead. And so I don't think we need a formal vote. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any objections and that the condition of their, your approval had been met by, so if you have any issues or concerns with the signage, we could certainly let them know, but if not.
Carrie, just for the record, the, the sign's not depicted in the right location, right? On this photo, it's really on the other side.
It was. Correct. This was done as a, sort of as a rendering, but it doesn't show, it's not scaled appropriately, probably in the sign. So I would focus more on the, the design of it.
And it's also, it's in front of the Daisy Flower Mill, not the house.
Yeah, it should be on the other side of the driveway.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, no, I like it.
Everybody's good with it? Good.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward.
Nice to see that. Next up is, oh, we go to some, we go to Mr. Valentine for the State Road Sewer Bypass bidding.
All right.
The exciting, now we're getting into the exciting.
Ms. Ivors gets a break and I get to talk about sewers.
It's all good.
That seems about right.
Sewers are extremely important.
Sewers are great when they work.
Yes, absolutely.
So this project has been many, many years in the making. So in working with the town of Webster, they had identified many years ago, ten or more, that they have a restriction in their town at the corner of State Road and Jackson Road. So they've got an issue on that corner. That's where a lot of our sanitary sewer drainage goes on the north end of town, goes through that corner. So as this board may be aware, in the past, we had held up some development that they had no more sewer units that we could push to Webster. So that was a holdup on some of the Abington development, some of the other stuff in that area to wait until we had that, or this agreement in place. So working with the town of Webster, now this is in Webster. They worked with the developer of the Visca development to upsize the sewer in their development. And then we signed an intermunicipal agreement with Webster that if they did that, we would install this short piece of sewer that would bypass their sewer flows coming down State Road. So their sewers drain State Road to the west, we're installing this bypass. So we've got about 300 feet of sewer that we're installing as part of that. So we've been collecting from developers, so the cost is not going to actually be borne by the town itself, but the developers that are benefiting from it, so as Ms. Ivors is bringing it up. The sewer bypass is at the end of Thistleberry.
Okay, thank you.
So all of their sewer flow comes down State Road, so we're basically cutting it off. You can see that little tree strip, that's a strip that's owned by the town of Webster. And then that connects into the Visca development at the north. So there's a manhole that Visca's development left on their end. There's a manhole at Thistleberry, we're crossing State Road and then just making that connection that cuts that sewer off, so now it flows still into Webster, but it goes on a shorter route than going all the way down to the corner through that restriction. So we signed an agreement with them. If they paid for their upgrade through the, the Visca development, we would design and then have constructed this bypass here would garner the town of Penfield 400 additional sanitary sewer units. They've completed their portion that, that's in now. The agreement is signed, we now have signed approved plans by the Health Department. The DOT, we're crossing the State Road, which is a county road, as well as the town of Webster, who is, it's happening in their town, plus going to their sewer treatment plan. So two items before the board tonight, first is the Seeker piece. Being under the Seeker, we're deeming it a type-two action under C-13. It is an extension of a distribution center for an approved subdivision. So there's no further action needed by the board on that. We just need to document it in the minutes that the Seeker has handled and is a type-two action. And then if the board is amenable to it, voting to put this out to bid, we'd put it out to bid, go with an RFP and then look for a summer construction to have that piece installed and then use the funds we've been collecting from other developers. So as Abington went in, we collected $500 for each unit towards paying, towards this sewer.
Now, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but this is this 400 sewer units really for the Rocko Pines? It's?
That's one of them, yep. So Rocko Pines is one of them, there's 72 units there. But this opens up, you know, other areas, you know, for sanitary sewer. We've got some other projects that have been on hold in that area because sewer, Webster has had no more sewer capacity. One was this restriction.
Okay.
Two, they had some restrictions in their sanitary, in their wastewater treatment plant. Webster's been undergoing improvements, expansions to their wastewater treatment plant, so that part is resolved. The remaining issue is this, this restriction on that corner. So this bypass will divert those flows and then no longer have that issue that holds us back.
Question, anyone? Then we're probably looking for a resolution to go out to bid?
So I would do a resolution on that behalf to go out to bid for that.
So considering that this has been a longstanding agreement between the two towns and we have all the agency approvals in place, I'd make a motion that the town now be authorized to issue the RFP for the design and installation of a sewer bypass.
I'll second that.
Roll, call, vote, please, Sue?
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Great, so we're done with action items. The next up on the, thank you very much, Mr. Valentine. Next is informational items, 1801 Penfield Road, there's a minor slight, slight plan change?
Yeah, so the, the applicant, after, upon approval by the town board, maybe a week or two later, reached out and said that they were looking at a potential relocation of their EV charging station onsite. That would result in minor change to the, the layout of the configuration of parking onsite that might just impact two, one or two spaces. I think they would be able to gain some spaces as a result. It's currently being reviewed by the town engineer, engineering department, and it's not a significant change. And it's certainly on the side of the building that's the least visible from the road or from any other area in general. And so I didn't think that it warranted coming back to the board as, you know, a public hearing, but certainly wanted to share with you that there might be a minor change. And it's something that we might classify as a field change, but because it came before the board, wanted to at least bring that to your attention.
Do you want to clarify again what 1801 is?
1801 Penfield Road, that's the, the chiropractic office that was adding the addition for the PT space.
Yep.
So that building, they're looking at a minor tweak to the building, to the location of a door and a window to allow for the EV charging station.
And that will be strictly for his employees?
I believe so. I think that's the intent for, for clients and for customers. I don't think it was intended to serve a public.
Okay.
But I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Sure, thank you. Questions, concerns? We're good with that, then. We have no held items, no old business, new business. We have one item here, revised draft local law to amend the town code 250 for mixed-use development district, a little update, we keep getting on.
Yeah, so the, the update is, we have a, we have proposed revisions to the draft local law that are now available on the town's website. If you go to the, the page dedicated to the amendments for the mixed-use development district.
The board has to look, receive them all as well?
Yes, they, they have been provided to the board as well. They've also been furnished to the, to the planning board, and they'll be taken up and reviewed by the planning board as well. The, the, the documents available in two formats on the website. One is a clean copy, in other words, you can read it from start to finish and see what it says. There's another one that compares the revised draft local law to the original with tracked changes on, so you can see underlining. In that format, it can be very challenging to read sometimes, so we wanted to put it out in both formats. But they are the same document, one just shows the changes, the other one just has them hidden so you can just read the text without getting lost in underlines and strike-throughs. I think from a, just to share with the world what's changed, or what's stayed the same. From the draft local law to now, to the revised version, many things have stayed the same. There's been no change to the proposed density of development, no change to the proposed fact that there are three, you know, three zones, there's no change to the location of the district, or the fact of, that there's a minimum requirement for non-residential in certain zones. Those things all stayed the same. The, is, what's been captured as changes in the revision would be, we added a section or provision to make sure that there's no confusion or conflict with any other section of the code. If it's in the mixed-use district, you, you stay in that district regulation for any and all guidance. We added an intent and purpose description for each of the subzones, so Zone A, B, and C. We more clearly categorized residential uses and non-residential uses, both permitted and conditionally permitted, to make it very clear to folks sort of the intent and the idea of what was intended to be happening there development-wise. We tried to streamline or utilize more consistent terminology throughout the regulations to reduce either ambiguity or confusion, so we try to call things the same thing throughout the regulation. We added and deleted definitions to reflect the changes in the code. We reorganized some of the order of We reorganized some of the order of information so that dimensional requirements were sort of all together in one place because in some places, some dimensional requirements were embedded further down in the code. The other thing we did was we moved the architectural requirements higher up. Before, they were sort of like down like number eight or nine below, like other things, we moved those way up because that's a big driver of what mixed-use development is. We also added an optional concept review stage with, as part of the development, the application review process. And that was, that's a voluntary option, it's not a requirement, but it would allow a developer or a property owner to come in with an idea, very conceptual with not a public hearing, more to have a conversation with the planning board early on before they start putting pen to paper and paying for, you know, lots of money for design professionals. And we thought that would help streamline communication and, you know, establish better expectations of what everybody's looking to try to accomplish. And then we added a placeholder for future transportation district overlay, which the engineering department is working on currently with the town attorney and with our consultant so that anybody that's coming into that area will know that at some point there may be an overlay district that they need to address. And it was more of a placeholder. The transportation overlay district would likely be added to the code at a future date. But it would be important for folks to know that that's happening.
Good. Questions?
Good. So what we're gonna, what we're asking for tonight is we'd like to set the public hearing, another public hearing, this is an ongoing active project. So I don't, we don't need it to be done by resolution, but if you would be so kind as to instruct me to submit public notice, we'd like to hold the public hearing at the meeting on the 22nd of February so that we can hear public comment. And so I'll put that, we'll get that processed into the, into the Webster Herald. And we'll get notification out on the website and on the bulletin boards, all the, all the usual ways we share public hearing information. I will share with you that we've had communication with the group of stakeholders that we invited to a roundtable discussion. We shared out with them a tentative schedule of events so that they would know it was coming and that they would know that to look for the updated revised draft local law to be published today in time for today's meeting. So, and I have verified that it is out there. So, it's on the website.
It is a work session.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we're looking at, holding it, just in the interest of time and to try to meet the moratorium deadline of March 31st.
We are trying to meet that.
So that would allow public hearing comments, and we've, we've also encouraged the stakeholders that, and anyone listening at home that written comments will be accepted at any time.
Absolutely, yes. Go, anybody in favor of going ahead for the 24, 22nd?
I move that, it's a motion, you want a motion?
I would love a motion if you would be so kind.
I move that we have a public hearing on February 22nd to, on the revised draft of the local law. I can't read it all, for the mixed-use development, it's long.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a mouthful.
I'll second that.
Sue has it all down.
Roll call vote, Sue?
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Akenden.
Aye.
Four ayes.
We have no executive session tonight. Our next work meeting will be on, work session will be on February 22nd, 2023. Like to thank the department heads that are here tonight, those that presented also to goals and priorities. I'd like to thank Tony Security that's here tonight, PCTV Tyler, thank you downstairs, and thank you all.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
That's okay. Action item C, the Blossom Road signage. We didn't, we didn't vote on that, did you want to?
We didn't need to vote because it was just a condition that the town board have an opportunity to review it.
Right, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you all, okay, good, thank you, so, and Sue, thank you for tonight, for attending tonight. I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 7:05. So thank you very much, be safe, have a nice evening.